Call the meeting to order. All board members are present except for Sherri. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. First item is our consent agenda.
I make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Um, I'd like to point out a couple of people and have Mr. Dittberger take over then. Uh, we have two retirements. Uh, one of course is Ann Marie who has been a fixture at school since the mid-sixties. And Mrs. Heimrohl from, uh, the, uh, elementary division would like to add, uh, you know more about them than...
Pardon me?
About the two retirees.
Yes, um, been here a long time, done a great job for our district. I'm not sure exactly in the numbers, Ms. Heimrohl, but, uh, um, uh, Mr. Henderson, forty-one years, I think was the most that we've had.
I think Mrs. Heimrohl's about nineteen or twenty.
Okay, alright. Well, but we thank them for their service and, uh, we'll be missing them.
Any other comments, Don? All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Committee reports policy.
Um, our last meeting, the only change we had was on the professional conference travel form and travel policy, and that was just on the breakfast and dinner reimbursements. So they're comparable with federal guidelines. We upped the breakfast by three dollars. Lunch stayed the same, it was at twelve dollars. So breakfast went from eight to eleven, lunch is twelve, and dinner went from twenty to twenty-three. So just three dollars on both of those to meet with federal guidelines. That was it.
Thank you. Southwest Metro.
We had our, uh, meeting for the month last Tuesday, and at the, uh, meeting, we did a tour of the addition that they did to the Jordan, uh, building. That building houses students that have, uh, severe emotional, uh, problems. And the addition that they put onto that building will accommodate students that need a great amount of supervision, even beyond one-on-one. Uh, it's to the point where some of these students require, uh, maybe two to three, uh, staff members to work with them. They're severely, severely, uh, behaviorally disturbed. But, uh, the positive part of it is that with help from this program, uh, students can actually make progress and return back to their home districts. So it's not a one-way street where these students are just, uh, put into this program and, and that's the end of it. Uh, there is a success rate to it, but it, uh, takes an extreme amount of, uh, work with these students to, to bring them around. So, uh, I believe with the classrooms that were added were like four of these special classrooms that are very low-key type of places because these students don't do well with, uh, any types of disturbances as far as being close to a lot of commotion and things like this. So it was a very interesting, uh, addition to the, to the program. Uh, we also had, um, a report on our budget, a preliminary draft of the budget that we'll be approving, and, uh, things look, uh, good as far as the budget is concerned. Uh, other than that, it was just a typical meeting.
Any CPAC?
Yes, we had our final CPAC meeting of the year on April sixth, Wednesday. And, uh, several of the things that we covered were, uh, the inter-district transfers, uh, because of students with IEPs. Uh, students with IEPs can ask for transfers based on their IP needs. Uh, we looked at, uh, transitions between buildings, which is also a part of it, uh, as students go from one level of services to another, from elementary to middle school to senior high school, and, uh, making sure that, uh, students are, uh, given some assistance and some help in making that transition as smoothly as possible. Uh, it's, you know, somewhat of a challenge for the typical student, but students with special needs, uh, even have more need for dealing with transition. So that's a, a very important, uh, uh, item to deal with when we have, uh, special needs students. Uh, the school year has gone well. We've gotten good feedbacks from, uh, uh, parents saying that, uh, our programs are working well for their students. Uh, there have been very few issues that have been brought up to our, uh, special needs coordinators, and, uh, our, uh, programs are, are going well. And, uh, then we also talked about, uh, summer programs that will be available for students. We have a nice set of programs that, uh, students will be able to access through community ed. So we hope that a lot of, uh, our students take advantage of these opportunities that they will be given during the summertime. Beyond the, uh, extended school year that some of the students, you know, do have to take because of the IEPs, but, uh, ones that they can take, uh, through community ed as a, as an elective, so to speak.
At through community ed of each district or?
Uh, through our, through our district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, any community ed updates?
Uh, we haven't met, uh, since the last meeting. However, with the, uh, the, um, flyers are out and, uh, you have to remember that we're done at the, uh, week, the last week of, uh, of, uh, May. So we've had a ton of registrations by phone and by electrical. And I urge parents, if you want to get your kid into, uh, a program that's popular, uh, and limited in numbers, uh, do so as quick as you can because, uh, they might not be available or may have to start up another group. It was a fact that we're done, like, uh, what?
Yeah. Things in June are filling up already. Uh, the Wellness Committee, Sherri isn't here tonight, but she emailed me that their next meeting is April twenty-seventh. Um, that'll be their first meeting with the new Director of Health Services, and they'll go over the survey that the district employees did. Um, also, if there's any board members who would be available, she has another meeting at the same time. So you can talk to me about that. Uh, early childhood.
We're having our last meeting of the school year tomorrow night, and the four, uh, subcommittees will be submitting their grant applications for their projects.
And those applications go, are, are decided on by the committee or go somewhere else?
I'm not sure that, it's a self-central group that's, that's really moderating the, our meetings. And there's, uh, when, when, uh, we were accepted for this, uh, initiative, there are grant funds available. And then we have to do some in-kind matching for that. So, um, I'm not sure who has the final word.
Alright, thank you. Superintendent reports.
Alright, uh, first, just want to comment on construction. Um, obviously, middle school is, is going, you know, making a lot of progress. Uh, they're ahead of schedule there with the middle school, which is good to see. Uh, we did receive news, uh, the manufacturer for the pre-cast concrete walls, uh, that will be for the CEC, the pool area, uh, looks like, uh, we thought it'd be coming in in July. So right when school is gonna get out there, or even, we're talking about in May, uh, it'd start digging here at just north of the CEC, but, uh, it looks like they're not gonna be able to, uh, get the pre-cast concrete walls till the end of August. Um, so we're probably not gonna start digging dirt till about the middle of June. Uh, the, the big downside on it is, uh, we thought they'd have the pool done by next April of two thousand seventeen, but now it's looking more like, uh, completion date will be June of two thousand seventeen. So, you know, I guess, you know, it's just part of the construction thing. There's anything we got control over, but I just, uh, received that news and asked them if that could change, and it was obviously a no. So anyway, no. Um, the other thing, um, just want to make sure our information out here. Um, we had registration, kindergarten registration, um, everyday kindergarten and alternate day. Uh, we only had thirteen parents sign up for alternate day, um, at Eagle View. And we had two at, that were interested at Raven Stream and two at Falcon Ridge. So we do not have eighteen at a building site, uh, and that was a minimum number. So, um, just wanted to give you that update, let everyone know that. The other thing is next year's calendar, again, we start before Labor Day again, and we end May twenty-fifth, I believe, actually one day earlier than this year. And we still have a spring break. But, um, as far as our days, um, if we have emergency days or snow days or bad weather days, whatever you want to call them, um, we're looking at, the first day is just a day off. The second day, uh, we have a committee, Sean Brant and Tony Booth, they are, uh, hosting with, uh, some teacher representatives, is that we make it flexible learning or digital learning. Uh, not, so actually, if it is on the second day, or, or there are the other subsequent ones, uh, that, um, we have, uh, student learning going on where there'll be, uh, assignments, or not just busy work, but actually some teaching and learning going on, on those days. That's a possibility. So they're gonna be working on that, um, uh, for next year. So I just want to make sure everyone was aware of that. Um, also, we got things coming up here. Uh, prom is, uh, coming up this Saturday, April thirtieth. Uh, we have a, our end-of-year band concert on May ninth, Monday, May ninth, and our honors banquet, our scholarship banquet, on May eleventh at the high school auditorium. So those are, uh, dates of importance. Um, I've been on the fine arts tour lately, the last week and a half, and, uh, I just want to mention too, it's been, uh, wonderful what's going on with our, uh, went to the jazz band concert the other night at the high school. It was a wonderful concert. Uh, we had the high school pop concert, which, uh, people I've talked to said they set the bar even higher. It's, uh, it was just a wonderful concert. And the middle school musical was simply outstanding. So a lot going on, a lot of positive things, and, and, uh, urge you to support, uh, all of our groups, whether it's in athletics, the arts, music, whatever. It's, uh, we got a lot of talented kids that, uh, we have a lot to be proud of.
And then even an alumni, Kenzie, did you see that today?
Oh, I should mention that. Kenzie Neisen, uh, sophomore at Oklahoma State, uh, led her team to the Big Twelve championship, and also set the record for the lowest, uh, score ever in Big Twelve history. So I think she shot one under par, two under par, and then the last day she was six under par, so eight, eight shots under par, something like that, for three rounds of golf. And, uh, yeah, just outstanding performance. So the second year in a row, her freshman sophomore year now, she's won the Big Twelve championship. So, pretty cool.
Alright, thank you. Next, on to our action and discussion items. We're gonna have a presentation by Dennis Taboric from the New Prague Historical Society.
Microphone or?
Yes, please.
This is new technology.
We're always cutting edge, Dennis.
Always a challenge to, uh... For someone my age who started, uh, teaching here fifty years ago, when I set up the art department and, uh, when we had, uh, eight elementary teachers and we had, uh, I think we know intercom service, and, uh, it was, uh, as I look back and now as we anticipate the raising of the nineteen twenty-three building, where I started my program and where I met my wife and, uh, established, uh, my roots in New Prague, we, uh, the Historical Society wants to embrace that, uh, event, uh, with, uh, recognition in the form of a, uh, some type of, uh, formal, uh, offering to the community to come into the building and to, uh, reminisce, so to speak, with, um, memorabilia that the Historical Society has in its possession. I've talked to Mr. Dittberger regarding that, and he has had, uh, communication with other communities that have done similar things. And, uh, uh, we have, uh, members in place who graduated and, uh, from that building and worked, uh, one worked as a secretary to the superintendent. You know, those days, everything was housed in one building. And, uh, it, uh, it comes with nostalgia, but, uh, a sense of pride that, uh, we can't, uh, hold on always to the things that we, we remember in terms of material things. We have to look forward and, and hopefully, uh, we do a good job to assist the school district in, uh, in commemorating that building, which has served the community, uh, well for the number of years that it's been standing. So, uh, when that, uh, when the raising of the building, uh, is anticipated and is on the calendar, then, uh, Mr. Dit, uh, Mr., are you a doctor yet? Do you have a doctorate?
Could be. No, I'm not.
We've had superintendents in the past that have had doctorate, you know?
We know what's happened to them.
Right. Prognosis wasn't good. We, uh, we want to work at, with him. We, uh, have a great collection of memorabilia from the first graduating class to, uh, the graduation commencement, uh, announcements and so on. So this evening, I, I brought one of them with me for you to see. It's the nineteen oh-eight graduating class. There were four lovely women, uh, Lucy Yelinek and Tracy Uch and Barbara Piesinger and Cora Van Ossik. So I'm just gonna pass that around for you to look at. When I was at the high school today, poor Ann Marie was being harassed by a, uh, secretary that was being harassed by some senior that didn't want to pay her, see the necessity of pay her graduation fee. So these girls, uh, um, look very proper. And, um, uh, we, we want to embrace the school district. And, um, so in doing so, we've come up with a program. Beginning in the second week of May, all the sixth graders are, have been invited to come to the log house in the park. The city of New Prague kind of, they asked the Historical Society to, uh, uh, embrace that building and do something with it. And so we did, we cleaned it out with the majority of things and have furnished it as an eighteen seventy immigrant home. And so the sixth graders, uh, twelve sections are coming to the log home in three days, in the second week of May, as I mentioned. And, uh, we, the, we have interpreters who will give them background and history of the log house, which is a great source of curiosity amongst the youth in New Prague and adults as well, I should mention, and then take them to the inside of the log home where we have furnished it appropriately to the period and so they can see what life may have been like as an immigrant. We are also going to speak to the immigrant process as well. The, the sixth grade has a unit in Minnesota history, and so, uh, Minnesota history is also New Prague's history. And we have a rich history to share with the, the children. Uh, the, an outgrowth of that is a curriculum that I picked up, uh, at the Historical Society in Northfield last year that the eighth graders and the, uh, faculty, uh, produced for the school district. And so I've given that and shared that with the your curriculum director. And, uh, she is, um, has made contact with Northfield. And, uh, it's not that we want to replicate this very ambitious project, which is, but we want to, uh, down the road, I think, encourage the, um, the school to be part of the process of producing a interactive history of New Prague. Uh, and when I speak of interactive, it's, it's, uh, age-appropriate, whatever to, uh, it's the understanding and study of our community. The Historical Society is in the process of, uh, fundraising, and we want to add a base, uh, an adjacent building to the log house to house our collection of farm-related tools, as well as commercial, uh, business district tools. And, um, so, um, we've, in the, we've replying for grants, and we've received money from LeSueur County and from, from, um, the New Prague Foundation to get, to begin this project. It will be adjacent behind the log house. So next, next fall, when the sixth graders come, we're, we're going to do a, two tour, um, segments for the sixth graders, because the spring is, gets, gets pretty hairy in terms of trying to coordinate, uh, activities. So, um, we hope that building is completed, and we are embracing the project with the concept that we want as many community members to be part of the process of building it and contributing to it. So I've brought with me, um, a letter form that we are beginning to send out this week to area business and, um, the, the community to, um, to request a, um, consideration for whatever they can donate. We're going to be relying on, um, uh, donated labor for this project as well. So what I'm hoping is that the school district will find its, some place in this project to contribute, whether it's time, whether it's, um, money, whether it's, um, some form of, um, contribution that would help us realize our goal. So I'll give this to, um, I'm getting cataracts, I can't, I can't read the names here. Sorry about that.
There's also a copy of this letter on our board docs, we do. We have it electronically.
Technology again.
So anyone in the community could go read it before they even get it sent to them, if they want.
Yep. Yeah, that's, uh, that's kind of a, um, our intent, anyway, so to speak. Are there any questions about any of the things that I have mentioned?
Dennis, how many active members do you have in the New Prague Historical Society?
We have a core group, myself and three graduates of New Prague High School, and, um, one that wasn't, or two, a couple that have roots in New Prague but are not, uh, were not born here. But we have a small group, and then we have probably a hundred members in it's...
Hundred members, but...
And we've kind of resurrected our, our, um, Historical Society. And, um, most of the, the original members, I began the organization in the early eighties, and it was an outgrowth of the bicentennial in nineteen seventy-six. And most of those one, those wonderful, wonderful early members are, are no longer with us. So, uh, this belongs to the youth of the community, and, um, I've been very fortunate to have these people come forward to me. I didn't have to go out and, and ask them, but they've come to me. So it's a, they're very dedicated, and, uh, we, um, are looking forward to a great, um, next generation.
I think it's really nice for these sixth graders to be able to see that this is how people lived in this area that many years ago and just kind of compare it to what their life is like now.
Exactly. We had it open during Dojinki, and, uh, the, the interest and curiosity was overwhelming. And, uh, um, I'm hoping that, uh, we can synchron, we can coordinate this with the opening of the pool when you folks do your synchronized swimming routines and, um...
Okay.
And, in any event, uh, um, we're, we're excited about it. Any other questions?
Uh, you were, you were fortunate, you were actually half in the nineties, nineteen hundred building and the nineteen twenty-four building.
Yes.
You were down there, and, uh, we wondered if you'd ever get out, if there was a fire, but then it was Jerry.
Yes, well, that drawing behind you is, of course, the early nineteen hundred building. I, I, uh, had to carry buckets of water, uh, all the way to the second floor when I was teaching art to the sixth grade and fifth.
Dennis, what year did you start teaching in New Prague?
Nineteen sixty-five.
Okay. So, back to Ann Marie Simon, who retired, her lovely Ann Marie. She started in sixty-nine.
Mm-hmm. As an employee, but I remember when she was high school. I had this guy behind me as a student.
Yeah, but at least you had a chance.
It was like, yeah, I had taught her.
Jerry will tell you, the students that were in the nineteen, uh, hundred building way up on top, and the teachers, we were hoping that it wasn't gonna be a fire.
Oh, I never thought about that. I never thought about that.
clarify, are we really twins for the...
Don always claims we're twins. Actually, Don was in the, uh, in the, I don't know if you were in the delivery room, but you were in the maternity ward when my wife was born, the same, same month, January of nineteen forty-seven.
He doesn't remember it.
Oh, it was first, I don't know.
Okay. Well, Dennis, you know, I've, I've gone to one of their meetings, as we talk about decommissioning the, the older building, and we don't know the exact dates, but we will be working together. And, and I've been collecting some stuff from other school districts. So, uh, we'll have something in the works and we'll keep everyone updated. But it should be a, a fun remembrance and, and celebration of, uh, that building.
Great, I, I look forward to it.
Thanks for...
And thank you for your cooperation.
Tim, I gotta, if, if the school is looking to participate financially, maybe we can talk about it at the work session or have some ideas, you know, we don't know where we can participate.
Well, we're limited in regards to that, on what we can do with public money, but we'll be talking about that.
I understand. We've, we're sending letters to the, the Raven Stream, the, uh, Eagle View.
There's...
They have, they have, they have parent, um, organizations, so... But, uh, never hurts, never hurts to ask and see where you, the, the school district as a, an entity can fit into the project.
It could be something else besides money too, but thanks so much, Dennis, for, uh, doing this.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Waiting for that synchronized swimming.
Kit, Kit's gonna be the coach.
As long as you're one of the swimmers.
I'll just come to see that.
Or pay not. Tim's gonna talk about the high school staffing.
Okay, uh, like it says on board docs there, we'll be, uh, taking a look, I'll just start with the elementary. We're, we're looking right now, projecting right now, to decrease by five staff members. Um, and basically, uh, this goes back to what was, uh, projected, uh, two years ago by Hazel Reinhardt, the state demographer, uh, when she was, uh, we hired her as a consultant, that our elementary enrollment would start decreasing. Um, we were much higher this year than we thought we were. We actually increased from two eighty-five to two hundred and ninety-six students. Uh, right now, for our budget, we're projecting two hundred and sixty-nine. Now, keep in mind, um, decreasing five right now, we'll, we'll have to, we want to, you know, keep our class sizes as low as possible, but we're gonna keep a close eye on that, on registration that comes through our office. But right now, we're projecting about two hundred and sixty-nine students. Uh, so there'd be a decrease in staffing of five. Then at the middle school, stay the same. We, we were seeing, we're projecting just a slight increase in enrollment, something that Hazel Reinhardt thought we'd see for the next five to ten years as that elementary numbers come up through the middle school and high school. And then the high school, uh, will be a little bit more than that. Right now, we're, uh, in a total increase for sixteen seventeen of, uh, point nine one. But we're really keeping a close eye right now. Uh, we may add on to that with world language. Uh, we have high class sizes right now. We just need to finalize some things and make sure, uh, we know where we're at with that. And also science, especially in the physics area. Uh, Lonnie Seifert, our principal, has some concerns too with, uh, our class sizes there. So we still may have to address those issues. Uh, overall, we'll have a decrease in staffing as a district, I'm fairly confident, unless things change. So, are there any questions?
Do you, you don't need an approval of the numbers for high school? Uh, next, we need to approve the mowing agreement with the city of Alcoa New Market.
Yes, we discussed this at the work session, um, two weeks ago. The mowing agreement, we've had it for a couple of years, where Alcoa New Market City mows the school district property out at Eagle View. Uh, right now, we don't have a place to store our equipment out there, so we were having to, um, you know, transport it every time we wanted to mow. So it's worked out very, very well. And they are increasing the cost slightly per mowing from a hundred and sixty-one to two hundred dollars, but they're also... from a hundred and sixty-one to two hundred dollars, but they're also increasing the area that is mowed, and it's just worked out really well, and, and Craig would, uh, Craig Moss would like to, um, approve this new agreement for two years.
I, I think it's worked out well too, and I, I don't see any other better way to do it, so I'll make a motion to approve the mo- mowing agreement with Alco New Market.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero.
Thank you.
And we have a non-renewal of teaching contract that we need to read and vote on.
At this time, I'll consider resolution for the non-renewal of a teaching contract for Adelaide Grimmel. Do I have a motion?
I'm so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. It is recommended that the board terminate the non-tenured contract of Adelaide Grimmel, uh, per resolution stating that for the probationary teacher in independent district seven twenty-one, be it resolved by the school board of independent district that the pursuant to the statutes that the teaching contract of Adelaide, a probationary teacher in independent school district is hereby terminated at the close of the current two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. Also, there will be a written notice being sent to the teacher concerning her non-renewal and, uh, also her status as far as any action that can be taken on her part. How do you vote on this, Don?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Thank you. Get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.